Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Monday, November 25, 2024. We are here for a morning work session with our folks from Community Justice Alternatives. My name is John Kofolis, County Commissioner, joined by my colleagues Kristin Stevens and Jody Shattuck-Mcnally. Across the way, we have our county manager, Lorenda Volker. And before we turn it over to Emily, Lorenda, is there anything you'd like to share?
I'll quickly turn it over to Emily, but I would like to say thank you to all the folks who are in the room. There's a lot of good information that's going to be presented today. They're doing some pretty exciting work in CJA. And so, Emily, I know you have an hour. I'm not going to take more of your time. I'll turn it over to you.
Hopefully, an hour and a half. Okay. I started to panic for a second. Okay. Good morning. Again, my name is Emily Humphrey, and I am the Director of Community Justice Alternatives. So, happy Monday before Thanksgiving. So, thank you for being here. We're really excited today. So, today, we're going to talk a little bit at the beginning about some housekeeping things that I wanted to update the board on. And then, we're going to turn to our main presentation, which is why all these incredible individuals are here. So, we're going to start out by talking about our bond instructional videos that we're going to be producing. We're also going to give you an update on our fifth warrant clearance event, which we're very excited to talk about. And then, the real reason we're here is our Behavioral Health and Criminal Justice Information Sharing Grant. So, I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with our bonding videos. So, oftentimes, when an individual is arrested and they go into the jail, a lot of individuals have never been part of the criminal justice system, and it can be very foreign. Same for their family members, and same for victims of crime. What happens if I'm a victim? What happens next? And so, we decided that it might be a good idea to have some instructional videos so that people can really understand the roles of individuals in the professional criminal justice arena and how the bonding process works. So, in November of 2023, our Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, CJC, decided that it would be helpful to create some videos that talk about each player's part and what goes into the bonding process, that could be posted on their individual websites in a compilation of all the videos so that someone could really understand the whole process from when an individual is arrested until they're released on supervision. So, in September of 2024, we were very excited. We contracted with Pooter School District with three young, well, two young individuals, Daniel Record and Porter Gardner, who work for instructor Stephanie Maznick from Pooter School District. They're incredible individuals. These are students who are taking classes and learning video production, and were used to develop the stories and the filming and the editing. So, we were able to have Daniel and Porter come on November 12th and do the videos for these, the taping of these videos. And now, they're in the processing of editing the videos, and we should have them by the end of the year. So, we will have a booking video. So, when an individual goes to jail, you'll know the process and who they talk with. You'll also be able to understand that you can go as a family member to a kiosk and help them bond out in the middle of the night, things of that nature. We'll have a pretrial video that will talk about an individual being interviewed at the jail. They may be calling loved ones at home to determine whether they have the ability to cosign on a PR bond as well, and then how they do supervision when someone is released out on bond. Then, you'll hear from the judicial officer about what goes into making an assessment about what bond should be for individuals in the crimes that they're alleged to have committed. And then, you'll hear from the public defender and the DA's office about what their role is in the bonding process. And then, again, we'll put all of the videos together in a compilation so that from start to finish, an individual in the middle of the night could press that button and really learn what happens next in a criminal case. So, we'll bring that to your attention, hopefully next year when it's done. Do you have any questions on that?
Thank you, Emily. Colleagues, any questions or feedback? Yes, Commissioner?
How long will the videos be?
The videos are going to be short because we know we want to keep people's attention. So, we're hoping maybe a minute to maybe a minute and 90 seconds. And then, the compilation will probably be more like four or five. So, because it's hard to kind of piece that all together. So, that will be a little bit longer video.
And what's your plan for getting it out to the community, so?
It'll be on each. It'll be on each individual's webpage, so the DA, the public defender, law enforcement, and hopefully, their PIOs will push them out with their social media blast as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Emily, just a quick comment. This seems to complement very well what is being considered, I think, by our Public Affairs Office, and that is to, over a period of time, produce a series of videos that are in a proactive way conveying the message and narrative that we're actually doing good things here.
Okay.
So I think this complements that well, and I would suggest, if it's not already occurring, that there be some level of coordination with Michelle and her team.
That's wonderful. I did not know that, so thank you for that.
Of course.
I look forward to doing that. All right. So now I get to go to a really happy note as well. We had our fifth warrant clearance event on November 16th, and it was a very big success. Commissioner Kofalas, when you came, it was very slow. It picked up tremendously after you left.
You don't think it has any, it's only a coincidence.
It's only a coincidence. I promise, it's only a coincidence. This is the first time we actually had it back at the Justice Center. If you remember before, we had them either at the Perdido Building in Loveland, our Loveland office, and then we also had them at libraries and churches. But we determined, since this was the fifth time, that the public trusted what we were doing and brought it back to the Justice Center. And to be honest, it was the most successful we've had yet. So I always like to highlight our staff that was there from Community Justice Alternatives. So everyone's in this picture except for Justin Grott. I forgot to take his picture, so I just wanted to give him a shout out that he's not in this, but they did a great job to spend their Saturday with us. We had incredible community partners there. A lot of good networking happened and a lot of good services for individuals that came through the system. We gave out vaccinations. We gave out information on how to sign up for benefits. We have the Food Bank there. We had Homework Alliance there, just a tremendous amount of resources to collaborate with a lot of folks. And a lot of folks in this room also had tables there, so I want to thank everyone as well. I want to give you a little bit of the statistics that we had. At the Eighth Judicial District, we had 114 cases that we handled. 106 of those were warrants. So what that means is eight other cases came in along with the warrant. So an individual came in with a warrant and two other cases that didn't have warrants attached, so we cleared those as well. Eighty-five of the 106 were traffic and misdemeanor cases, and 21 were felonies. We turned 12 people away because their warrants were ineligible, meaning maybe the crime was too high of an offense to come forward, maybe they had a warrant in another jurisdiction or another state that we couldn't handle. Municipal Court also had 11 warrants cleared. So our grand total is that we had 129 warrants that came in front of us, and we were able to clear 117. And the total cases we actually handled was 125. So an incredibly successful day. And it was very much, I will say, bringing it back to the Justice Center was a lot easier for the professionals because the courtrooms were already there, and we didn't have to create courtrooms out of classrooms. We're going to talk about Rosie tomorrow at Admin Matters, but we had surveys that we had taken, and Rosie was a key contributor to getting people to sign those surveys. But what, I want to talk a little bit about what the survey said to us. I wanted to find out, where did they come from? Where did people find out about us? And what we really found out is there was a lot of word of mouth and trust that came forward, but a lot of folks were going online. They even went on law enforcement's websites that were also advertising and found out how to turn themselves into these warrant clearance events. Social media was a big push as well. We also asked what would be better in the resource fair, and a couple of things we took away from that is more housing opportunities. Housing instability is very huge, specifically with the population that we were seeing at the warrant clearance event. So we're going to bring more to that at our next warrant clearance event. And this was the first one that I never thought about, but donations, food donations and clothing donations, and actually having the ability to give folks clothing there. Never thought of that, and that was a really good suggestion from some of the individuals that came forward. So really looking forward to next time. We normally, the first two that we had, we had DMV2Go to get identification cards. We've not been able to get them at any other event. So that's the one thing that is probably the most promising, if we can get them there, but they're very booked, because before, we've had 17 to 19 individuals get their identification cards at these programs. So we'll continue to push for DMV2Go as well. I want to give a couple quotes from our survey because I think it really kind of brings the whole thing home of why we do this. It says, "I want to thank everyone. You were all awesome. I feel human again with hope for the future. Thank you, Laramie County." Another individual said, "This is a great event to help the public get legal with trust in the county." And finally, "Excellent service and opportunity for people to start a new life. Very grateful for today." I can tell you that all of the surveys that we had, there was not one negative comment. And I want to do a little bit of success stories before we start our main presentation. We had a mom that came in front of us with two active cases. One, she had her case dismissed, and one, she got probation. During the time that her warrant was active, she got her life back together and did an inpatient program through the Wings Foundation, so they took that into consideration. We also had a person travel from Arizona. It took them two days to get here. They had a 2012 warrant. Because they settled that warrant, they're now able to get their license, and they haven't had their license since 2005, actually, 2004. So pretty good opportunity. We also had a 19-year-old that wanted to go into the Marines, and so he had to clear that warrant and remove a hand tattoo, and the hand tattoo is almost gone, the warrant is also gone, and he'll be able to enlist in the military. We also had an individual who has open heart surgery scheduled later, by the end of the year. We were able to clear her warrant and give the ability to have a furlough so she could do open heart surgery during that time. We also had an individual travel from Wyoming to settle a 2005 warrant, and another individual from New Mexico for a 2020 warrant. Those were just a number of success stories that we had, but it was an incredible event. And again, we'll do the next one, hopefully, at the Loveland Police and Courts Building six months from now. Does anyone have any questions about the warrant clearance event?
Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, thank you. These are always remarkable events, and it really is a way for people to feel like they're getting their life back, and they don't have that hanging over their head. So I appreciate this, the work, and I'm glad to know that the Justice Center wasn't an impediment for people, that it didn't feel scary in any kind of way. That's great. One of the questions I has is, so for the people who were, had ineligible warrants, I mean, what happens with those kind of scenarios? Do they, I mean, do they get resources for how to clear that up? Does that, I mean, is there some help given to them?
Right. When they first walk in the door, they go through security, and then they meet with the public defender, and the public defender will screen them, whether they're eligible or not eligible. Law enforcement is not in the room at that particular time, and so they're given information about how to turn themselves in or where their other warrants come from. They'll give a piece of paper to them as well that says, "I tried," so that when they do turn themselves in, they can tell the court that they tried to go ahead of time. But yes, they're told where their warrant is, when, you know, how they can go and clear it, but they're basically turned away at the door, and they can walk out free and clear.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. I didn't understand how that process worked. The last one I attended was at the library, and so, which was pretty popular, you know, it was a pretty good event, but I didn't know how that worked for folks. But at least they get some opportunity to understand what they need to do, maybe, at that point.
Yep, absolutely. And the goal eventually is to do a statewide one at the same time, so multiple jurisdictions, having a warrant clearance event so that we could do some virtual, because oftentimes, our partners in Boulder and our partners in Weld, they'll have multiple warrants on each side. So if we could handle our warrant and then call over to Weld County and handle theirs virtually, so that's the next step that we're looking to do. Yep.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, fantastic job, well done, and just impressed, continues to be better and stronger each time. And I, last, I think I turned the one over at the library and then one at Loveland and Perdido, and it struck me at Perdido that you had the two floors, and you had, I don't know if you had a screening before you came in, so my two questions, I'm sure it was easier to have it all on one floor, so they have to go up and down the stairs and set that up. And then, secondly, did they have to go through screening at the bottom to go before they went up, or how did that look like?
So this was, to be honest, a lot safer because they came through and got screened immediately. In previous ones, they would not get screened until they were going to go in front of the court. And so they went upstairs, got wanded and screened, and then went in front of the judicial. So this was a lot easier because we had security that does that every single day, and it was a lot smoother.
And my last comment or question is, I see some really strong partners that we partner with as commissioners. I'm very glad to see them involved for a lot of reasons. And I think this also builds trust between our partners and the community and us, seeing us all working together, especially since some of these are becoming really trusted partners in the community doing their work. So I just want to compliment you on some of the folks that you had doing those resources. And I know whenever you send out your other thank yous, I hope you'll express our gratitude for them, because those are all volunteers, a lot of these folks, I see this, and I wanted to give them a shout out for coming and being part of such an important event. But thank you, and thank you all that are involved. It's pretty remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I suppose I would be a bit remiss if I didn't offer a shout out to our newest Community Justice Alternative six-year-old ambassador. When I arrived, it was very nice, to say the least, about being welcomed by such an enthusiastic, warm human being welcoming folks who were getting through the metal detector, so that...
Absolutely. And you'll get to see her a little bit more tomorrow, so that's exciting.
Yes, I know.
Yep. And I will tell you that we have, the last three events have had peer support, where folks are walking them through, that have been through this, have walked the same walk that they have, and that's been just a tremendous asset to the program.
That's right. Her mom is involved with Yarrow Collective, I believe.
She is. Yep, she is.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Well, now, I'm very excited to turn it over to all of these incredible people to my right and left and behind me, but we're going to be talking about the Behavioral Health Criminal Justice Information Sharing. And what I can tell you, and I can look around the room, and I think they can all say the same thing, we've been talking and thinking about this for decades. The opportunity to get out of our silos, to share information, to potentially meet individuals where they're at, to determine where they came from, the resources they've had, the things that work, the things that don't, and potential resources that we could provide to them, rather than potentially taking them traditionally to jail and having them penetrate the criminal justice system. So we're super excited to have this presentation, and I'm going to talk about who you're going to hear from today. You're going to hear from Derek Stalls, who is our business analyst from CJA to my right. You're going to also hear from Sarah Malacco from IT as a business analyst. You're going to also hear from Jen Redman, who's our project manager in this process from IT. Joe Mosh, Division Manager from Human Services, sorry, sorry about that. Ben Stevens, Clinical Program Manager from Summit Stone Health Partners, right there on my left. Jared G., because I can't say his last name. Jared G., he's a data analytics lead from Performance Budget and Strategy. And Corporal Stephen Fay, coresponder from LCSO, the Laramie County Sheriff's Department. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good morning. My name's Derek Stalls, and I'm with Community Justice Alternatives, and my role in this effort is I'm the product owner, which kind of means, at the end of the day, I'm responsible for making sure that the product is what we want it to be. And I have a great team working behind me that tells me everything to do, and so I think we'll get there. But we just wanted to start with this slide. Individuals with behavioral health challenges are at higher risk for abrupt discontinuation of care, inappropriate incarceration, and mental health crises. We wanted to begin with this slide because this is where we feel our project, our system can make a difference. We feel we can help with continuity of care, with preventing inappropriate incarceration, and reducing crises from escalating. Just one note, by saying this group's at higher risk for mental health crises, we don't want anyone to think that we're saying that individuals with mental health issues are more likely to be violent. Really, there's a large body of research that shows that the prevalence in individuals with mental health issues, the prevalence for violence is the same between that group and the general population. So we just wanted to be clear on that. Now I'm going to hand it off to Jen Reiman, the project manager, who will discuss the vision for the effort.
Okay. I'm Jen Reiman, project manager. So really, the vision with this is to enhance information sharing between criminal justice and behavioral health. So like Emily pointed out, with our great partners here in the room, so we have CJA, the Sheriff's Department, Human Services, Summit Stone, and the DA's office will be involved as well within this. And so really, this platform will leverage the data from all these identified agencies into a holistic view of a person to help support that continuity of care with the goal of improving client outcomes, reducing unnecessary incarceration, and increasing safety for all individuals involved. And this platform will be robust and flexible enough that will allow for additional agencies into the future. So we're starting with this group now, but then into the future of this platform, additional agencies could be included as we learn more. And so really, creating that hub for secure and permission-based information sharing between the agencies for optimal client outcomes within this and a safer community overall.
In planning for this project, we decided it'd be important to see if there are any other communities that were already engaged in similar efforts, and we discovered Johnson County, Kansas, who's had a similar system up and running since 2008. They, their system's called My Resource Connection, and it's an information sharing system, sharing data between jails, police, EMS, and mental health providers. Their system has enhanced services for individuals with mental health and substance use disorders. Their mobile crisis response team conducts outreach to individuals at high risk for jail incarceration, and this outreach has reduced recidivism by 23% and also increased engagement with mental health services. And just one interesting note, they're now piloting a predictive model to try to identify individuals at risk for overdose or suicide. I just thought that was an interesting, interesting new thing. In addition, they have a dashboard called Familiar Faces, where they're able to identify high utilizers in their system and target them through outreach. We just wanted to recognize the departments that are supporting us in this effort. The Laramie County Attorney's Office is providing legal oversight and direction. They're working with our legal consultant, Spencer Fain, who has expertise in behavioral health and criminal justice data sharing. Laramie County Information Technology, providing project management, software development, system access, and security. And Laramie County Performance Budget and Strategy, supporting us with data privacy and compliance, data analytics, integration, and analysis. The agencies and programs that hope to benefit from the information sharing include Laramie County Community Justice Alternatives, which is made up of residential treatment, competency court, outpatient treatment, Aman Wellness Court, community corrections, work release, pretrial, and a few other service areas, but those are the main ones. Laramie County Human Services, comprised of benefits, adult protective services, and child protection. Laramie County Sheriff's Office, dispatch patrol, coresponders, jail operations, and the jail mental health services. And Summit Stone Health Partners, the only external partner on this phase of the project, but such an essential partner to Laramie County. Some of their services include Longview Co-Response, residential outpatient, crisis, community, and jail-based services. Now I'll hand it off to Emily to talk about funding.
So we were very, very fortunate to get the Behavioral Health Services Impact Grant Fund for this upcoming year, and we received just shy of $150,000, which is a really good start to this project. So a lot of the bulk of that funding is going to go to our outside legal counsel, Spencer Fain. They're the ones that assisted Johnson County, Kansas, moving forward, so they really understand criminal justice data sharing with Title 42 and HIPAA and all that goes along with behavioral health information. So they are going to be working with our county attorneys to make sure that we can say yes to the data sharing. So a bulk of the money will go to the legal, which will help us also do the MOU that comes along with this. $60,000 is project management, which is our IT department supporting us and getting us off the ground. We have about $20,000 that's going to Summit Stone to help with their technical and their data sharing portion of this grant. And then the remainder of that $150,000 is indirect and travel, if we need to go to Johnson County, Kansas, or if they need to come to us as well. We've also been very fortunate that the Sheriff's Department is also contributing an additional $50,000 to the project, because 150 is probably not enough to do this big endeavor, so we will have more money to support moving forward. I would like to say that... I would like to say that other individuals in this room are going to be doing in-kind practices for us, and they're not billing us for that. So I appreciate Josh and his team for being a part of that as well, and Human Services as an example. So again, IT, the Information Technology Steering Committee, has ranked this a high priority, so we recognize that this is something that we want to do as a county moving forward. And I would also note that our strategic plan, Goal Two Objective One, which is the quality of life and the sequential intercept mapping project, this will go hand in hand with that. When we originally got the SIM mapping project back in 2020, it's the intersection of, mapping of, intersection between criminal justice and behavioral health. And they talk about gaps. And one of the gaps we had was data sharing. So now we've looked at that assessment and said, this is where we need to go next. So based on that sequential intercept mapping, we'll also kind of help with the strategic plan and this goal that we have moving forward with this project.
One moment, please. Yes, Commissioner.
First, I have to say, I'm really excited to finally kind of catch, you know, catch up with this, because I mentioned this when I came back from NACO, because the Pewterable Trust had me come out for the, and I didn't, that's not the name I had, but the Behavioral Health Crisis, Intergovernmental Behavioral Health Crisis Summit. And the gentleman from Kansas, you know, connected with me online and said, oh, we're working with you. Remember, I had asked questions about that, and it was like, I don't know what you're talking about. So now we do. So it's really cool, because that's really great, because even the people, the Pewterable Trust people that were facilitating that conversation were very like, oh, wow, these guys are connecting, and I think we're going to watch what they're doing. So I don't know if Pewterable Trust has reached out to anyone?
Not yet, but we'll be welcome if they do.
Okay. So I'll ask some questions on that and go back to that facilitator and just say, hey, this is very unique. And then I just want to shout out to Corporal Fay, because I know, I see a regional opiate abatement connection too, because we've expanded the coresponder program. This is, again, really important, I think, to share with the ROAC, even if it's just these slides, to show that this is also being preventive and why we need to keep that funding going. Because I know Corporal Fay have been phenomenal helping and supporting Sergeant Cook with all this data sharing. And I'm just really glad to see you here today, because it's really important piece to this puzzle, I think. And I just wanted to ask, with all of this, and maybe this is a parking lot question, so then you have a lot to share, yeah, let's put it in the parking lot for later. Because we have the Behavioral Health Administration, and we have some, next week, they're having a big presentation. I keep getting emails, are you coming, you're coming, you're coming? So I'll go to that. But I have, curious how this intersects or intersects or overlaps with that. So can you put that in the parking lot, and we can talk about that later? Because I want to make sure this big of a project and this kind of endeavor doesn't hit any, I want to say, I don't want to say barriers, speed bumps, unintended consequences, barriers. So I want to just ask about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And the one thing, if I haven't mentioned, what is so amazing about this project is all of the people in this room willing to come together and collaborate. And that's what we do here in Laramie County, both within Laramie County government and all of our outside partners. So this is what's going to make this successful, is the commitment from all of the folks in this room.
Thank you.
And just a comment very quickly, Emily, before you move on, on Commissioner Shadak McNally's last point, I think. Just a reminder that I serve as the Chair of the State Board of Human Services, and we do a lot of the rulemaking for the Behavioral Health Administration. And we will be seeing some complex rules coming up in the spring of next year regarding what are euphemistically referred to as BOSOs and everything else. So I want to make sure the communication is there, however appropriately I can make sure that there aren't those kinds of conflicts or contradictions.
I would, I would welcome that.
Oh, oh, yes, sorry. Didn't get on my peripheral vision.
No, that's fine. So, you know, I'm very interested in this project, and it's really interesting to me that we could, do we only find one county that was doing this work? Or are there other people doing this work that we, and this is just a natural partner?
Miami Dade is another entity as well. I think the gold standard is Johnson County, Kansas. So whenever we started our research, we always kind of came back to them, and they've done it for quite some time. And so they just seem like the right place to go to. They were very welcoming and ready to move forward. And actually, even the SAMPS, sequential intercept mapping recognizes them as a gold standard, so we kind of went with them.
So the legal piece is really interesting to me, because, you know, I think about, data sharing is really important, and how do we sort of protect people and make sure we're not singling out people in any kind of way? And that maybe this doesn't get them caught up in a system where they're prejudged as someone who has, wow, you've not only been seen by this organization, but by this organization. And so how do we, how do we make sure that the data is used in a way that's beneficial to both us and the person who is now having their data shared amongst so many different groups?
And there will be ROIs, release of information, that individuals will sign, that they will be able to withdraw their consent as well. But again, I think all the players around are there for the right reasons. And again, what I need as a Community Justice Alternatives or the planner is data. So I would be able to just pull demographics, and I wouldn't get to know what Summit Stone gets to see. So it depends on what screen you're looking at. So it's a need-to-know basis. So law enforcement will get part of the screen, but Summit Stone will get a lot more, because they have a lot more need and access when it comes to like the medical providing and behavioral health. So that's what will kind of keep it stellar, is that the right people aren't hearing the right, are not seeing the wrong thing. Does that make sense?
And do, I mean, do people who are, I mean, they have the right to know where their data is being shared and what that looks like? And, you know, I guess I just have some security issues. And I, I mean, I understand the value of this, and like, I'm looking at this as someone who's used several of these things. I feel very skeptical about, you know, you prejudging me and saying, oh, you're more likely to go into the court system. So we're, you know, I guess that that would be, that would be my fear, and I think maybe, I don't know if it's the public sphere, but I mean, I guess I just, how do we make sure that people understand that this is being used for, not used to prejudge people, but actually using to help people?
Yeah, it's a really good question, and I think we, in our subject matter expert meetings, we've been talking a lot about that. And it feels like the people that are sitting at the table are aware of how that data can be used and are trying to set limits within their own organizations to only certain people that, you know, I guess if you look at somebody, you know, that's not directly involved in the project right now, they may not have the same perspective, but we're really trying to put limits on that. It's a big discussion. We haven't completely hashed through it all, but we definitely are working through it. And the, with Spencer Fain, the legal consultant, we're going to try to work through what that ROI looks like, really that universe, we're thinking of work, trying to work through a universal ROI, so kind of like when you go in to see your doctor and you sign the HIPAA form, and it tells you how the data is being shared, there would be something similar. We haven't worked through all that yet, but it's very early right now. But it's, privacy is a really important thing that we're conscious of and want to make sure that the data is used in the right way. We want this to be for client outcomes, not just to bust people, right?
And we're going to do some scenarios at the end of the presentation, but for example, if an individual is contacted by law enforcement, and maybe they've had contact the week before, and they did really well with the coresponder that really kind of deescalated them, we'll call that coresponder out to kind of deescalate that situation. Or if they have an appointment at Summit Stone next week, we'll reach out to that case manager and let them know so that they don't have to come into the criminal justice system, that there's other avenues to give them supports.
Yeah, thank you. I just, you know, obviously, you're aware that people have mistrust of, when you're in a system, it becomes very, you feel like everybody's against you, right? And so I guess, you know, the more that we can kind of make sure that people understand the value of this, and we've all signed a HIPAA form, but I mean, you know, sometimes you sign a lot at a doctor's office. So I guess just making sure that people understand that would be, you know, what would be a concern to me, is that they really understand, you know, what they're signing and what we intend to do. Just because, you know, like, like I said, I'm a fairly knowledgeable person in some arenas, and I still am like, what can you, what? Right? I mean, I just signed a million different forms, like, you know, I mean, it's like, it's like buying a house. It's, it's like, I mean, at some point, do you, do you always know what you're signing? So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Before we continue, Lorenda has a question or a comment.
And I think I know the answer, but I, maybe this would be good to talk about too. But I think in terms of the Commissioner's concerns, one of the products you'll develop is protocols around engaging with a client, because they can refuse to sign the sharing of information, as long as they understand what that is and who they're sharing with. So is that one of the, one of the outcomes, the products that will come from this project?
Absolutely. And that's, like I said, it's kind of early, yet we, we have that on the roadmap, but it's, it's nothing that we've worked through yet.
And I think the nice thing is because Johnson County, Kansas, has done this and done it for a long time, we can figure out where they had pitfalls and where they, you know, where they had successes, and we can kind of follow their lead.
So really, the main reason we're doing the project is, it comes down to gaps, right? We've heard that said a couple times already. In Laramie County, we work quite collaboratively together. However, communication and coordination are lacking due to real and perceived barriers. Key areas where gaps exist include lack of awareness of other professionals involved in care, gaps in understanding recent care or support plans and/or treatment strategies, and insufficient knowledge of the individual's involvement with the criminal justice system. And in that vein, we wanted to read just a couple of strong letters of support from two great champions for this effort. The first one, who could not be here today? The first one's from Sheriff Fain. "Laramie County and its community partners work collaboratively to support individuals who are in crisis and in need of resources. This data sharing would prevent them from slipping through the cracks or entering the justice system unnecessarily. As a community, we would reduce a huge barrier to assisting those in crisis that need support. This support does not need to happen with handcuffs or cells or even an ER visit, but with support from entities that know what resources are available, what connections those in crisis currently have, and what other options exist to support that individual in need." And the next one's from Chief Judge Blanco. "We're fortunate that Laramie County is a collaborative justice community, but we're missing the ability to easily communicate among partnering stakeholders. When there are barriers to communication, it's often our most vulnerable citizens who are impacted. These vulnerable populations would be best served if agencies could share information, because the information could help navigate individuals to better-suited systems for their needs than the criminal justice system." So just like in healthcare, we wish to use the continuity of care model, which ensures that individuals receive consistent coordinated care throughout their journey. The key elements include collaboration across care teams to support individuals regardless of system complexities, seamless service delivery through integration, coordination, and information sharing among the agencies. And now I'll hand it off to Jared Griskowitz, Data Analytics Lead with Performance Budget and Strategy, to discuss the concept of interoperability.
Sure, thanks, Derek, and good job, Griskowitz. Right.
Got it.
That's pretty good. So I'm going to talk a little bit about interoperability of systems and some of the, some of the technical aspects of this whole thing. And, you know, as we've been saying, this is a wide-reaching project, you know, a lot of benefit, a lot of potential benefit, but, but a lot of, a lot of interested parties. So there's lots of folks, you know, a lot of different agencies and departments within Laramie County, but there's also Summit Stone, and we have some external partners as well. So what that, you know, really what that means is there's a lot of different entities that have their own business process, they have their own, you know, systems and their own applications that support their business and support their clients. And the ultimate goal of this system is to, is to bring all that data into one, you know, into one place, into one repository, which makes it more powerful and easier to use, right? With that comes, comes a few barriers, you know, that we have to address. The first one already came up, and I think that's, I think that's great that everybody's thinking about, and that's around data privacy, data security. You know, whenever, in today's world, especially, you know, when we're talking about people, you know, humans that are interacting, and we're talking about data, privacy is absolutely the next thing you talk about. And, you know, it comes up, obviously, as an initial barrier that we need to overcome in this project, which, again, as Derek's talking, we have some, some legal, you know, assistance that's coming to help us define the, you know, user agreements, data user agreements, data sharing agreements, right at the get-go, you know, so that, that's not a question moving forward in this project. So what that'll help us do is, you know, is define, you know, who can see what data, what data can we share, you know, which entities can see, you know, which aspects of a person's information, you know, and their situation. So that's, you know, again, we talked about that already. I think that is the most important hurdle that we need to get over, and I think we're already addressing that in the early stages of this project. So, so that's great to see. The second barrier or hurdle I'll talk about is a little bit on the technical side, but, and we won't get too deep into that, but there are some technical aspects to security as well, meaning, you know, again, we have multiple departments that are in, you know, within Laramie County, but they're also external partners. So purely just bringing, you know, transferring data into one repository is, there are some technical aspects to that. So we want to make sure, and we're addressing these as we go, but, you know, securely transferring data, you know, when we're moving data into, into the centralized repository. Storing, you know, securely storing data, you know, once we transfer it, we have to store it securely and make sure that we're, you know, adhering to the, to the privacy concerns that we addressed in the legal agreements. So that, at the end of the day, you know, we bring this data together, and we can confidently say that we are, that we're storing it, that we're doing our due diligence around storing data and keeping, you know, the private data private and the, and the data that is usable, that the right people are seeing those things. Because really, at the end of the day, this platform is, is a high potential for, to truly, you know, to give visibility into individuals' situations and to give better outcomes for the clients that we're serving. But the only way we're going to get there is if all of our users and all of the, you know, all the agencies involved have confidence in that system. And that starts, I think, with, you know, ensuring privacy, ensuring the security aspects, so that everybody feels confident using that platform. Because I, you know, at that point, it becomes very powerful. But if we don't have that confidence, if we don't have the trust of everybody involved, it's going to break down pretty quickly. So, so again, you know, we have some, you know, the technical hurdles thing that we can get over, but it's all about building trust and building confidence in this platform. So.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. So something sparked my attention, storing of data. We have a lot of data we have to store through body-borne cameras and other things, and a lot of that comes at a cost. I don't think people understand how much it costs to store and manage all this data and protect it, because it does take protection with all this cybersecurity as well. So my question is, and maybe this is too high-level or too way ahead of the game, but long-term, I don't know how long we're storing this data, who protects it, who pays for storing the data and protecting it with cybersecurity? Is that part of this grant, or is this a cost, you know, not trying to poo-poo this, but it's just, it's something I think about is, I have this vision of, we have this extra building that has all these servers that store everything, that we kind of keep under lock and key. I'm just curious about that, because I'm worried, always worried about cyber securities and information, so.
Well, I guess I'll, real quickly, I mean, there is a cost, and I agree with you, especially as, you know, because storage and security is such an important aspect to all of this, there is a cost that comes with that. And as data volumes grow, there is a cost that comes with, you know, how much data we're storing and how we're using that data. So it's something that I think the project needs to address as we move forward. I think we're in a good place to get going, but as usage grows and as data volumes grow, costs will grow with them. So it's something I think the project should address.
Absolutely, and we will. And I think we have a lot of players in the room, that there'll be a time where maybe all of us have to come in and yearly pay a fee to be a part of this process. And eventually, we'd like to see this expand to all of law enforcement, to many other behavioral health systems within our community, and they, that would also come at a cost, right? So we would kind of pool our funds together when that comes.
Thank you.
Emily, I have a, I have a few questions, but I've been holding off, but one of them deals with this interoperability issue. And my question is, how does this discussion around data sharing and interoperability relate to sharing of electronic medical records? I seem to recall, and someone can correct me, that UC Health, one of our big healthcare systems, developed, has a new software for sharing appropriately electronic medical records. How does this connect with that? Because I seem to also recall, when I was doing a ride-along with Fort Collins Police Services coresponder, they had access, but Summit Stone did not, and I think some of that's changed. Could someone speak to that, please?
Yeah, and I'll have Derek speak to that. You're talking about Epic. Epic is the new software program that they use. Absolutely, but Derek, you can- Absolutely, but Derek, you can better talk about what Summit Stone, or Summit Stone can talk better about what their plan is in regards to the repository and pulling down.
Epic, yes.
And I would just say that we haven't, UC Health is definitely on our radar, but we haven't connected with them yet. Summit Stone also uses Epic, but also has some internal, they pull some data internally. So that's what we're looking at is how we can get at some of that without the electronic medical records.
So if someone was admitted to an emergency department at UC Health, how would you be made aware of that, or should you be made aware of that situation?
We haven't really touched that yet, as far as UC Health records. That's something more long-term. Did you want to say anything? I don't want to cut you off.
Thank you, Derek.
Hi, I'm Ben Stevens from Summit Stone Health Partners. I would say, so Epic, Summit Stone started using Epic December 1st of last year. So it's still really a newer system to our entity. However, I would, in terms of accessing, generally speaking for Epic, and someone from UC Health and Epic would really need to answer this piece, but generally speaking, the way they license Epic out, they have their certain, like if I were to go in as a Summit Stone employee, I could see quite a bit of, like, emergency departments that someone had access if they're within Epic. However, if you're an entity such as Summit Stone, all the information we're putting in there, it's very, it's very limited on as to what can actually be accessed if you're not a Summit Stone employee. So there are probably a few layers there. But generally speaking, if I'm in Epic, I see a client that went to PVH, I have limited data that I can see, but perhaps I can see that they went there, some very brief notes. But then again, a UC Health staff member would not be able to see someone's behavioral health record. So a good chunk of that is well over my head, but again, it's like some of that sharing is, and utilizing Epic is still pretty new for Summit Stone.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, colleagues.
Commissioner, I believe that Fort Collins contracts directly with UC Health for their co-responder program, which may be why they had access to that data.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, folks.
And both of those organizations are definitely on the radar. We're starting small with this. So we want to reduce barriers and provide coordinated, comprehensive response to reduce the likelihood of a mental health crisis. And that includes helping with treatment needs, such as medication compliance, therapy, assessment, treatment programming, understanding criminal justice involvement, such as compliance with the criminal justice system, court dates, mandated meetings, substance testing, behavioral compliance, fines and fees, and criminal justice programming, and helping to support, helping to provide support for basic needs such as income, employment, financial assistance, food, housing, parenting, transportation, et cetera.
Before we go on to a more in-depth discussion of mental health crisis, I would like to offer the questions that I've been saving. And one set of questions goes back to the slide regarding optimal climate outcomes and safer community. I wonder if someone, Jennifer or someone, could elaborate more, what are some of the metrics that we'll be using to, you know, to basically assess, evaluate how successful we are? And actually, that ties into the discussion earlier about privacy. Will that be part of our metrics regarding the success of this collaboration of these, and the data sharing and all the rest?
We'll definitely be collaborating and getting the data together. Like, for example, we could look at reduced recidivism, so individuals not entering the criminal justice system any further. The access to resources. So for example, an individual now have seven different referrals to different places instead of the two that they've had, and we can, we can gauge it that way. We can also talk about length of stay or maybe entries into emergency rooms, so that their utilization of first responders will decrease. And do you want to speak more to that?
Will we also, if I, forgive me for interrupting, will we also be using metrics that are showing how folks have perhaps gotten their lives back in order and have some level of stability and perhaps employment, you know, secure, decent, safe housing? Will those be part of the metrics? Yes, Derek, don't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. It's a really good question. And we don't really know where we're at with metrics. I mean, we do want to hit the main ones. There's just so many moving parts. We want to make sure we can get the data together and then talk about the metrics. But the two that we know we want to get are jail saves and ER saves, to make sure that we're having an impact there. I think as far as those, what you're saying is super important. And I mean, if we're trying to address gaps, then we need to talk about how we work together to solve those gaps, right? So I think that data, it's in that, it's in the data. So how do we piece that together to get at it? I think it's a great question and something we need to talk about.
And I get that. We do things in steps. And I just want to reinforce the, at least in my view, I think all of our views is that the importance of focusing on domains or areas that can tell us that, yeah, indeed, an individual has experienced some level of stability in moving forward in their lives. And the same thing with people now working on a comprehensive homelessness strategy that involves a variety of stakeholders. Are we going to be looking at how all these interventions have ultimately helped that individual to, you know, get their life back in order if they can, as much as they can?
If I may contribute a little bit to that. My name is Steve Fay. I'm Corporal to Sheriff's Office. And regarding some of that information that you're looking for, that's something that we've actually started collecting on the co-response side within the last six months. Jared and his team has been fantastic in helping us develop a separate metrics data set regarding 911 response for clients with mental health that is separated from any sort of personal health information. So that's one thing that we've been tracking is, for example, are criminal charges applicable? Were they charged? Were they not charged? Do we overlook them because of the mental health origin? Secondly, was, were we able to return 911 services back to, back to their primary responsibilities and divert this call to co-response or to EMS? How was that cost savings and so forth regarding diverting these particular instances and these emergencies and crises to the appropriate care providers? And part of this project that Emily has brought forward is, I think, going to take that extremely far because now we have a whole new broad set of resources available for final diversion, right? So far, we've been stuck with a lot of instances where we don't know where to take somebody in the 911 moment. This is, this has been exciting to hear about.
Great. Thank you. Just one more question. And that is regarding the example of Johnson County, Kansas. That's great that we're looking, lessons learned and best practices. Johnson County is now piloting a predictive model to identify individuals at risk for overdose or suicide. That's more than intriguing. Can someone speak to that in a little more detail?
I don't know much about it yet. It sounded like when I, I just went out to look at their site and that something new that popped up that I think they just kicked off. So we're meeting with them again in a week or two, and we'll get some more information on that for sure. That does.
Thanks, Derek.
Pretty important, sure.
Okay.
And I really like what you were saying about, you know, getting at some of this story information, like journey mapping. I see really, and that's a good way to find what gaps still exist. So we do this and we think we've kind of pieced it together. But if we can map journeys and not, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to narrow it down to a person, but really like universally, what's the path that somebody's going through and where are there still gaps? That would be really important to me. So that's exciting Okay, so now we want to talk some about mental health crisis because we feel this is a place where we can have a real impact. Of course, anyone can have a mental health crisis, and here are some potential stressors that could contribute to a crisis. Loss or grief, traumatic events, changes in relationships, divorces or breakups, isolation or having no support system in place, switching or stopping mental health treatments, discrimination, losing a job or failing a class, natural disasters, violence, terrorism, substance use, medical diagnoses, pending court date. And there's others. This is a pretty good list, though. Many of these stressors are items that we help our clients with every day. Next, we have signs of mental health crisis. While these may present differently for different people, many of these are concerning and show behaviors that indicate an increase toward escalation, such as dramatic changes in personality, mood, or behavior, increased substance use, difficulty with daily tasks, rapid mood swings, isolation, withdrawing, self-harm or self-medicating, psychosis, hallucinations or delusions, paranoia, increased agitation, including abusive or violent behavior, and thoughts or discussions of suicide. What is a mental health crisis? Here's the definition from the National Alliance on Mental Illness. A situation in which a person's behavior puts them at risk for hurting themselves or others and/or prevents them from being able to care for themselves or function effectively Of course, crisis and escalation can lead to several items that we might be involved with. Physical health problems, further emotional and behavioral problems, disability, substance abuse, legal and financial problems, poverty, homelessness, unemployment, inappropriate incarceration, self-harm or suicide, or harm to others, homicide. We want to prevent all these things. We want to stop this trajectory as early as possible before we get to this point. However, if we do get here, we want to de-escalate. And really, information, key information about a person can help us to do that. Next, we'll talk in some more specific detail about the project. I'm going to hand it off to, oh, no, it's to me. Sorry.
Hand it off to you.
So we just want to let you know, and I probably should have put this slide earlier, but we are committed to respecting an individual's privacy by ensuring proper release of information. We intend to only share the minimum information necessary. We'll use permissions to only share the legally allowable information. We'll be collaborating with legal experts, and we'll build a system that follows strict data security standards, and we will be auditing system usage. So those are a few of the items that lend to some of the questions we had before. Now I'm going to hand it off to Sarah Maloko, the Business Analyst for the project, to talk a little more about some project details.
Great. So my role on the project is supporting Derek as the product owner to make sure that we have a method to our madness of meeting the requirements of the system so that we're implementing a successful solution for all of our partners. So one of the things we did early on in the initiating phase of this project was to put together a roadmap so that we could have a shared understanding amongst our project team, but also amongst our partners, both the legal team and the agencies, for what's happening when in this project. So you'll see the first part of it kind of goes through December. Things we've done is identifying, identifying the data stewards, the SMEs, and the data owners, so the governance group. We've worked through and have almost, pretty much completed the data identification. So our work with the SMEs, understanding what their use cases are, what data they need, what would be helpful to them. We'll start embarking on mapping that data, so understanding how to get it within the system, assuming if it's, you know, allowed. So understanding that technical backend, so that when we bring in Jared's team, they'll have a map for how to go get that data. We've started already engaging with our legal team, and that data identification will be a huge input to them because that's where they'll start to say who can have what data. And then as that wraps up, we'll work on finalizing those agreements and permissions within the agency. So then we go into like solution development, identifying how we're going to have a user interface where all these partners can interact with once we deliver that solution. So what that user interface should look like, and then developing that out. Near the end of that, we'll reengage with the agencies for testing, training, communication, and we'll also have that legal team do a final review of that solution to make sure we haven't drawn outside the boundaries they set for us. Okay, so this is, this is the fun part. Derek has worked really hard with the SMEs from the different agencies, understanding what data is important to them. So again, we have those different roles, right? We've worked with the SMEs to understand the data that they need. The data stewards will map it. We have the legal team, and then the data owners from each agency that will kind of grant those permissions. So when we worked with the SMEs, we said, what is, what would be your ideal scenario? And these are the categories of data that they've come up with and prioritized. So there's elements within each of these categories that they would like, but the legal team has said they'd like to look at it at the category level first. We'll work with the permissions that they designate about who can have access to what data based on a role-by-role permission set from each of the agencies. So that obviously differs if it's behavioral health data versus criminal justice data, and who was the source of that data. But these are the data categories that are important to our agencies and partners for understanding about their clients and the people they're helping.
And I would say there's a lot more on the list, but this is the highest priority stuff, so we just wanted to at least get that before you.
You know, Derek, it strikes me that some of this data is already public. So not all of this data is private that you'd be pulling in. It'll be a clearinghouse of information, though, so you don't have to go out to different sources to find even what's public. So even if that's just the start, that would already be beneficial.
Right.
Before you get into the private data.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Any questions on this?
So now we just want to walk through some pretty realistic scenarios on how this information sharing system could be used to have a positive impact in our community. And I'm going to kick it off with Corporal Fay with the co-responder program with Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. So the co-response team is really excited to be a part of this because there's often times where we find ourselves in a moment when we need to know something and we can't figure out how to help this person. Clearly recognize that this is a mental health issue, and each mental health issue is unique to that person. So the ability to share this information and/or be able to ensure that this person gets to the place that they need to go to take care of them is fantastic. One hypothetical example that we can provide to you is, in this particular case, I've had personally many calls that are very, very similar to exactly this, where we get dispatched to a public store of some type, and there's somebody there who is clearly struggling. They're having a very bad time, and they're yelling at everybody around and unable to control themselves. Rightly, so a lot of people are scared because they don't know what's going on, right? This is not normal behavior. That naturally ends up in a 911 phone call. The benefit that we have is having this co-response team. We can start quickly identifying that this is, this is unique. I think we need to bring in some different resources for this. So our co-response team will typically come up to a call such as this, where we arrive on scene and we're able to identify a person that is suffering a mental health crisis. The benefit that we're looking forward to with this particular project is, right now, I know this person needs help, but I don't know who is helping this person, if anybody's helping them already. We have limited resources, but chances are, every time I've called one of those resources, I'm told that's protected health information and we can't release that. One of the big struggles with that is there's no system in place to be able to say, hey, look, we are a vetted source, where this is the information that we are seeking for this unique, extreme circumstance. How do we find that? One of our benefits that we're hoping to see out of this is that by being able to look into this system, identify this person, go, hey, wait a minute, they're connected with these resources already. Okay, where can we, where can we take them that they know and they trust somebody already? When you're dealing with a person in a mental health crisis, it's not that they're more violent, they're just more unpredictable because they're already struggling to think rationally. And if we can find that hook with that person to say, hey, this is someone you already know and you trust, we're going to be able to start making some significant strides. If we are able to look at this person and figure out that they just had court that day. If we were able to look at this person and figure out that they just had court that day, at Wellness Court, and that they are typically having a really rough day after court because it's a lot of legal implications. We can get ahold of the Wellness Court representative and say, "We're talking to this person right now. You just saw them in court. They're struggling. Let's get them back to that situation where we can explain some things further, help them to stabilize, and so forth." By doing so, we're able to de-escalate them because we have that knowledge and that power with that to bring them to that particular place that they feel comfortable with, get them back on track. All in the meantime, averting jail and also averting emergency room services. Questions on that?
I did want to, just real quick, I wanted to reemphasize this point. In the past, we've had a circumstance where an individual had been in our AIM program and had graduated and completed their sentence. And because that officer just happened to be our Wellness Court liaison, recognized them down in Old Town, called our case manager, and we came and got them and brought them back to our facility because they felt comfortable there. It would have been a whole lot, had it not been that particular police officer, we would have never known. In this situation, they would have known that this person was an AIM or Wellness Court client. We could reach out to their case manager and say, "Hey, this person is downtown. Do you know what's happening?" and have that connection. So we had a good outcome that time, but it was just luck of the draw that we had that officer that ran into them downtown.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I think for the corporal. Based on this scenario, is there a threshold for a member of the public to know when it might be appropriate to call law enforcement or 911? Example, I mean, periodically, I will encounter folks walking, I do a lot of walking, and I will encounter folks who are yelling insults and cursing, not necessarily directed at someone. Might that be the threshold before it would be appropriate for a member of the public to perhaps call 911? And if we're in the city, well, 911 will get, it'll get routed to the proper law enforcement. Can you comment on that, sir?
Yes. So, we've been doing a lot of outreach in that particular method, or what you're discussing. We've been interacting with Pooter Fire Authority, Loveland Fire Authority, UC Health, Thompson Valley, and all our local law and agencies to say, "This is the co-response model. This is what this can be." We're trying to do a lot of public education as well, saying, "Co-response exists. Here's what we can do. Here's how we can help." I think in that general instance, right now, our primary mechanism for getting assistance, right, is 911. And I think the public does a pretty good job of saying, "Something doesn't feel right in my gut. We need some help." And when that does arise, people are quite good about calling and asking for help. Our job on our side, especially through dispatches, to set a lot of expectations and protocols and say, "This feels appropriate," and filter that down to a co-response team. We've been partnering with our other agencies to develop co-response in EMS and in fire as well to fill that gap where that might be relevant.
Thank you. That's helpful. I guess, an afterthought on my part, one is I probably should be paying more attention and giving it more thought than just, you know, observing that person walking down the street. But it causes me to think a little bit, like in the spirit of prevention and in the spirit of being as proactive as one can be without, you know, without drawing attention, unnecessary attention to an individual situation. There may be some logic if one is observing that behavior to involve co-responders before the yelling and the insults might be directed at an individual. But I think it's a bit of a fine line.
It is quite a fine line, and it's one of those things, how do you determine if somebody's just having a bad day and they're upset about something, or are they struggling mentally with some sort of situation? That's a very difficult thing. I can attest to myself that in co-response, we get a lot of phone calls. People citing, "Hey, this is just odd behavior." We'll call that reporting party, ask them further questions. And there's often times where like, that's not something where we want to inject ourselves and potentially make it worse because of that ability to filter and so forth. Even a co-response model coming with a clinician, you're still arriving with an officer and/or a deputy, and you still have that potential to stir further, you know.
One quick follow-up, and this is really helpful. In that scenario situation, would the dispatcher receiving perhaps the 911 call, would that person know to, well, maybe, or do they, can they reach out to a group like Fort Collins Outreach, for example? And maybe they're better suited in this description of a scenario to respond. Is that correct?
And I was going to actually just say, Outreach Fort Collins would be a good, yeah. Outreach Fort Collins would be a great opportunity. And I know they have a limited area that they patrol and walk around.
But the dispatcher knows to contact them rather than perhaps the co-responder unit?
Chances are, they're still going to give it to us, and that'll be our job to filter, which has been the nice part about working with these different groups of... The dispatchers are really good at handling 911 phone calls and getting that out there. But that's not their, they can't know everybody.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks.
And eventually, if we're successful and we expand this process, organizations like Outreach Fort Collins could be a part of this data sharing so that we would know that they've interacted with them downtown, and they know this individual, and they do really well with that contact.
Okay, now I'm going to hand it off to Ben Stevens, Clinical Program Manager with Summit Stone.
So, the scenario I'm going to talk a little bit about is someone who is presenting to Longview. So, Longview, like really those clinicians, those staff, can have a pretty hard job at times. I mean, they are clinically assessing, using screeners, interviews, to develop a plan for a client that could be substance use-related, that could be self-harm, homicidal ideation-related. But really, a lot of times gathering collateral information on clients is key to developing a meaningful plan for the client in the moment, so to create safety imminently. But also, looking ahead and hoping to support them long-term and for them to have better outcomes for themselves, their families. So, this specific example, we've got a 38-year-old woman found in a non-verbal state, and so not talking at all, was brought to Longview. So, they use the system that we're talking about to find her emergency contact, which is her sister, who's then able to give quite a bit of information, which immediately helps to support the clinicians, the medical providers, to develop a plan. So, for example, knowing that there's a history of opiate addiction, knowing that the client was recently on meth medication in the jail, released from the jail, discharged from the jail, was a no-show at a follow-up appointment. All of those pieces of information are key and can go a whole, like just those bits can go a whole, quite a ways to determine what the client needs. And then, the court date piece, too. Like, that's already come up in a previous example. But for this, like, there was able to be communication to avoid that client getting a warrant. So if that was not able to be avoided, and the client did get a warrant, let's say, released from Longview after a 72-hour stay, maybe is then immediately picked up after releasing, has some police contacts, fill in the blank. But also, back in the jail, we're kind of starting that revolving door again. And really, I think part of this is going to reducing recidivism and meeting a client where they're at. I would also say that for this example, our Longview team has, you know, that's lots of staff over there doing lots of really good work. Those teams have a whole lot of collaboration with our community-based and outpatient programs who are serving some of our higher-risk, fairly acute clients, oftentimes criminal justice-involved. Not always, but almost always, with that population, there is a criminal justice history. So I think, you know, this data sharing, again, in this specific example, gives some like really tangible whys of like, hey, why does this data matter? And why could it have a positive impact on a client in the moment? But also, hopefully, for their long-term outcomes, too.
Thanks, Ben. And now, I'll hand it up to Jill Mosh, Division Manager with Human Services.
Thank you. Yeah, Jill Mosh with Human Services. I am working with Lori Metz on this, who is Aging and Adult Services Division Manager. She was not able to be here today, so if you ask me some detailed questions, I might not have the answers. So, in this particular instance, we are talking about an adult protection referral. So someone has called in. In this case, it's a daughter that's called in about her mother with concerns about her mom's caregiver. So her sole caregiver in the house is living with her mother in the house, and her utilities were shut off. So, in this instance, our intake caseworker would use this system to kind of review what has happened in this case before, right, with these people that are involved in this case. And they find that there's some drug and alcohol addiction in the past, and they include this information in the referral information that then goes to the RED team. So you guys remember that the RED team reviews all the cases each morning and then decides what they're going to do with cases, should they make a call on these families or not. And in this case, they decide to open this case or assign this case for assessment. And so, in that process, they find that this person has used the mother's funds to support the addiction. So that has kind of come back into their lives. And the mother is kind of unaware of these addiction cases, this addiction case. And so, they've, they work with the mother to readdress the finances and work with the daughter, the other daughter, Joan, to get the finances kind of reorganized and back up in order. And I think the most important piece is they get, they work to get the utilities turned back on, and they really work on the safety and stability for the mother in this case that the call was made for. And I think the other piece that we don't really talk about is that we're able to kind of work with Summit Stone and the other partners that are in this system to get the assistance for the sole caregiver, too, so that they get the help that they need to work on their addiction issues as well. So, but this could be used for our child protection as well. So when we're looking and reviewing those cases, we can look at some of the data and the history that's included in this system, too.
Thank you. And so, we just wanted to end on the future vision. And really, we just want to take the expertise that we acquire through the course of this project to expand. We want to bring on additional agencies that have other essential information that will allow us to have greater insight for optimal outcomes. Thank you. We'll take any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, comments, observations? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I ask my questions, but I appreciate it. I think the case studies were illustrative of why, you know, how this could be used in a very beneficial way to help people in our community. And so, you know, I'm glad to have the information about how you're moving forward and just to keep us posted. And thank you for the work that you all do. You know, I know that you'll keep in mind some of the things that I shared about data privacy and, you know, using the information. And then, also just how we let people know that we're using the data for beneficial reasons and not for getting them into potentially more trouble, right? So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Please.
I did have a couple of questions and a comment. This adult protection referral case actually happened to a friend of mine a few years ago in Loveland. So just wanted to say, this is very familiar to me. And I'm curious, I'm assuming, I guess I should be careful about that, but that Human Services and Office on Aging would get involved with the mother, making sure she's not a victim of abuse or verbal abuse, and also having mental health challenges, and also making sure that they're getting maybe some help through services for getting maybe food. Or, because if they don't have money to pay their utility, they probably don't have money for food. I'm just, I'm sure that's in this scenario, but I just wanted to ask that. And will Human Services kind of also be kind of coming in with some of that information and backing up some of the older adults? Because that's, we have an increasing older adult population. I just met with the largest group of birthed older adults last week, the largest I've ever seen. So I will be contacting Laura and some of you just as a heads up because they haven't asked. There was like 40 people there for birth. That was a lot. And they're looking for help. So I just, I'm curious about that, just our older adult population. I'm assuming it's yes, but I just need you to, maybe for the public, to say that, so.
Yeah, that caseworker would go out and work with that mother specifically and make sure that they have all the resources that they need for stability. And I will say that, in this instance, the mother had MS. And if there is some reason that they need utilities turned on, we would be working to turn those on without waiting to see what the reasoning is that those were turned off. We would be working on that upfront. So absolutely, we'd be working to make sure they had the resources that they needed.
Thank you. I thought that, but I just wanted to kind of say that because there's a lot involved with that. And I just, I feel like I'm, this is exactly what happened. And being a caregiver myself to my family and dealing with some caregiver issues right now, it's kind of near and dear to my heart. I'm really excited to hear about this because, you know, that gentleman said, "Oh, Lormont County reached out to us about familiar faces. You guys are working with us." And I'm really glad to see this is coming to fruition because I know that Peter Treble-Trust had pulled all the people that they were very interested who were doing innovative and cutting-edge and exemplary work. So I think this is great that we're partnering with another group that they had identified. So I'm really excited. I think this is a lot of potential. And I think also, I feel we're getting into a period of time where we're going to have more people in need in a lot of ways going forward. And I think, I'm sure as you're getting this together, I'm sure you'll see the needing, I'm hoping, but I'm assuming the need will be increased. So I think the data, even though I agree with the privacy is very important to protect that, but I think having us use strategic data analysis and helping us guide limited resources to help people, I think in the long run, will have tremendous impact, but also save us... And it's money-driven because we have less money and we have more resources. But I think this will also save the system money in the long run, is my thought. So is there a way you can capture that by saving jail bed days, helping folks not get a trip to the ER and spending $10,000 on an ER trip? Is there a way that we're going to capture that so we can maybe, just like I'm doing with Wildfire right now? There is a cost for not doing something like this because it costs more when we just use the system status quo right now? I'm just curious about that.
Yes.
Yes. Those are the two measures that we have definitively said we want to capture. There's not a lot of putting data into the system to push back to systems, but that's the one piece that we want to be able to capture, those elements, so that we can run those statistics and those numbers.
I also think, maybe another one to know, there is a data and a outcome, pretty much, working on a research project out of Pooter Fire and their Integrated Mobile Healthcare Unit that for every, you know, for one person, one week, responding and keeping those high utilizers out of calling a fire truck or going to the ER can save at least $1 million a year for the fire department. So just, that's some of the data I've been seeing, and so I'm just curious. I know Senator Hickenlooper's been having some conversations with those folks. And so, I'm also, just now there's some other data out there that maybe they might be willing to share with us. I don't know. I'm just curious. So I think there is a lot of potential here for saving the system or our continuum of care overall. But overall, to make sure that we're taking care of, best care of people and getting better outcomes. That's the high priority. But we also have limited resources, so I see this is going to really help take some pressure off the system because I do think we're going to have more, an increased need and acuity. So, I just want to commend you all for the partnership and working together because it takes everyone, the importance of data analysis and business analysis. And of course, I'm a big fan of co-response and our partners, and Summit Stone and all these other agencies. I'm just really excited to hear about this, and I'm tremendously hopeful about this. And I look forward to hearing how this all is implemented towards the end of the year. So, happy Thanksgiving and thank you all for your work.
Thank you. I have a question and then a comment, mostly a comment of appreciation. My question is for Jill. Regarding the adult protection referral scenario and the caseworker, the Human Services caseworker reviewing the information, does that also include getting access to information from financial institutions? Because this is an example of financial elder abuse. We passed legislation many years ago that incentivizes, requires financial institutions like banks and all the rest to provide... like banks and all the rest to provide upon request, you know, information that would help demonstrate that indeed this type of abuse did occur, financial elder abuse.
My guess is that yes, that information would be included in, somewhere in the information that we review with the RED team. This is just another tool in the toolbox for the RED team. I would defer to Derek to see if you're talking to any financial institutions.
I have not yet, but it's another great, great point.
Yes, maybe to confirm that. And it is information that under the right circumstances, law enforcement or other folks can access to perhaps confirm that there might have been inappropriate activity on the, on the account of that individual. Then my comment is to kind of building on what Commissioner Shattuck McNally offered. I think looking at all the folks that are assembled here, I think it's a rather clear and extraordinary testament to our efforts to go beyond the silos and not work in our, in our own little spaces, but really partner across all the different sectors. So I think this is wonderful. Thank you. Law enforcement, community justice alternatives, community corrections, behavioral health, IT folks, performance, budget and strategy folks, on and on and on and on. And it's, it's great. So thank you very much. Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Lorraine, oh, yes, you get, you get the last, the last, the last words, the best.
I'll try to make it sound wise, then.
Please do make it sound, it'll be wise.
We talked about collaboration, but I think as I look at the three topics we talked about today, you're sort of looking at pain points and addressing those for our clients. So you're demystifying the bonding procedure, right? That's a collaborative process with the H judicial district and others involved to make sure that folks understand who are not typically justice-involved, what that process looks like, to make it less scary and more easy to navigate. The warrant clearance event, that's good for clients. It's also good for the system, but you're clearing up people's minds so they can live their life and go forward. The examples you gave are great. They really demonstrate that. And then this information sharing is really addressing a pain point from the perspective of the client. How do we best serve the client? And I know you'll deal with the other side, the fear around how that information will be used. But I think as, as this gets kicked off, your, your intentions are pure to serve the client, and I would just encourage you to continue to poke holes in it from the other side to make sure that we can talk about it in a way that creates trust around this kind of thing. So people do sign that form and understand exactly where that information is going and that they can revoke that as well. I think you've checked all the boxes. You seem to have these things on your list of, of things to consider, just like you did in the bonding process and the warrant clearance. I think you're very concerned about trust, and this is a great example of collaboration to build trust in our community for folks who are justice-involved and/or are most vulnerable. So I just want to point that out. The theme, which is not unique just to these three things, this is sort of what this group does on a daily basis. So to the public, I hope you have confidence that these folks are serving you well.
Thank you, Lorraine. I'm always generally very grateful when you're batting cleanup, so thank you very much. And I just wanted to add, I was remiss that we have at least two folks from service areas, Human and Economic Health, which oversees Human Services, and then we have Internal Supports and Services that oversees IT and a variety of other folks. So great, great collaboration. Anything else do you, did you want to say, Emily? It looked like you were...
No, nope. Just thank you for this opportunity and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy and blessed Thanksgiving to you all. Be safe. We're adjourned at 11:29. Yahoo.